I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary to note roll call, Jason.
All members, David.
It's early in the year, so we do not have our student honor years yet. Special presentations, we have none. Board correspondent report, Pat.
Okay, remember that Blue Room Commission was put together, they've got some recommendations. One would expand the eligibility for sparsity aid. It would modify the way school district revenue limits are adjusted for declining enrollment. The general aid payment schedule right now, it would be four equal ones, I think that's the one. We get it in September, December, March, and the remaining in June. And right now, it's like, what, fifteen, thirty-five, twenty-five? Oh, fifteen, twenty-five, twenty-five, and thirty-five, and they would make it equal twenty-five across the board. So I don't know how that would, that would...
For us, we're pretty good, but for our school districts that are short of cash...
That would have to borrow.
...the November is always your worst month.
Okay.
So that would actually give them a little more cash, so they wouldn't have to short-term borrow.
So that would help them out a little bit, but it wouldn't bother us, because we are in excellent shape. One thing, it would count the four-year-old kindergarten program. If you have a five-day-a-week full four days, or you know, full days, would count them as a one-full-time student, rather than point-five.
Or point-six.
Yeah, but you have to have, it has to be five days, it has to be full, you know, all day. And then there seems to be a lot of incentive for whole-grade sharing and incentives to consolidate, not only school districts, but administrative positions. So we'll see kind of where that takes us. There's also an assembly bill out there that would, I think what brought this up was all the snow that we had last year. If you're a school district that is in one of the top two categories on your school board, on your school report card, then you wouldn't have to make up some of those days that were missed due to emergency or inclement weather. But you've got to remember that you could have a high, you know, you can have in the top one, you know, two categories, but you still have some students that really need the instruction.
I thought you were going to say that in the areas that get the most snow.
No, no, no.
I was thinking, maybe we have some, you know, relief for the places that are in snow belts that are...
Nope. And then there's just a couple of things that are cropping up legislatively that's going to end up, probably end up in legislative mandates that we, you know, non-funded, no funding. Requiring sexual abuse prevention education, requiring teen dating violence prevention education, requiring cursive writing in elementary grades, which we could have talked about that a little bit here, and requiring schools to test for re-immediate lead contamination in drinking water. So those would be things that are kind of thrown around that would be unfunded mandates.
Well, they're at least not bizarre ideas. They all sound like good information, as long as they don't tell us how to do it.
Well, but they're still unfunded.
Yeah, they are. Other questions, comments for Pat? All right. CISA report, Mick.
Well, Jeff was pretty happy, had thirty administrators attend the first PAC meeting for September, so that was pretty pleased about that. And Fox Eleven is also starting what they call Steam Clips. It's really, it's similar to that My School Experience. I'm not sure what the cost is going to be on that, if we want to get involved with that, but it's going to start out there. In February, CISA is going to be offering a free professional learning opportunity. Don't know, that's all I know about that one. And also, a big for us is they are presenting the Redefining Ready Program that they developed at the National CISA Convention in San Antonio, Texas, I think it's in Texas this year. And on a more of a fun note, Green Bay Packers are hosting an educator night for the Hall of Fame on October ninth, so you can take your husband, your friend, your significant other, tour the Hall of Fame, talk to people, see the learning opportunities there, talk to them about, you know, school...
So any educator?
Tours. Any educator, yep. So, I think that's kind of, if you have never been to the Hall of Fame, it's an opportunity to, you know, to go and see that at no charge. October ninth. Now, there's a, I got a link, you guys maybe got a link to register for, but if not, let me know and I'll make sure you get it.
I'll send it to staff, like, for our social login options.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty nice.
Yeah. Okay, questions or comments? All right, we'll keep moving, any citizens' delegations? Student representative report.
Hello, my name is Colleen Dashlet, I'm the student council president. And we are currently preparing for homecoming. And the classes have been creating skits and decorating floats and hallways in correspondence with their themes. The hallways will be decorated on September twenty-ninth, which is this coming Sunday, from 1:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. Each class picked a movie and TV series as their theme. The seniors' theme is Stranger Things, the juniors is Harry Potter, the sophomores is The Office, and freshmen is Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles. In addition to these, students also compete in Powder Puff, which is held on October second, which is Wednesday, next Wednesday, volleyball, and a few other games held during the Puff Assembly on October fourth. The class with the most points wins the spirit stick. In addition to the themes, our dress-up days, which include Disco Girl, which is kind of like a trendy, like trendy clothes that girls wear now, like oversized shirt leggings, like stuff like that. Country Day, Class Color Day, Jersey Day, and Black and Gold Day. On October fourth, the homecoming parade starts at the Alumni Long-Term Care, where the band will play for the residents. The parade begins at 4:00 p.m., and the row goes down Fremont Street and turns left on Division Street and to Perry Fields. The homecoming dance is on Saturday, October fifth, with the grand march starting at 8:00 p.m. Any questions?
How's the school year feeling?
It's going pretty well.
Okay, yeah, just getting going.
Tell them what your fair part is. I'm taking a lot of college classes, which is good, because it's a lot cheaper to take them in high school, and then I can, like, enter college as a sophomore, so...
Excellent, yeah, that is one of the benefits we offer. Any questions for Colleen? Thank you. All right, as far as announcements, I hear good things about the way the school year is starting, that's great. I also just have to share the feeling that I had last Friday, when once again, worldwide, youth leadership inspired and created gatherings, thousands of gatherings around the world, on an issue that they felt was important to them, climate emergency, and voiced their concerns for their future and the future of the world. And it's inspiring, it's another example of how our youth is leading, but it also sort of just reminded me that it's that much more important to us that we prepare them for these roles, that we give them the communication skills, that we give them the problem-solving and critical thinking, that we give them the opportunities. And on the flip side, I mean, I think one of the wonderful things about youth is that, for the most part, I think they're still seeing clearly, they're not as influenced by special interests and politics and some of those kinds of things that may be influence some of the rest of us a little more. But with this whole electronic age, I find it myself difficult to try and figure out what is real and what is misinformation, because we're all very, very busy. The easiest thing is to get little snippets of information and form your opinions from them. But depending on who's putting out the information, we all know that depending on what little snippet you take, you can slant something one way or the other. And so, like I said, I, you know, I'm hoping the kids are a little better at it than I am, but if you just click on one thing, then suddenly there's all this background of web and email stuff that suddenly knows that you might be interested in something, and then you get all sorts of information. And again, it may be totally slanted toward one opinion, which is okay, as long as we recognize that maybe that isn't the only information. And sorting through what's real, trying to help our kids navigate to get accurate information, I think it's going to be one of the biggest things we can do for them. And it's not going to be easy, but I think discern, you know, discerning so that, not saying you can't get a couple different sides to something, but have it be factual, so that then you can look at the facts and make your decision. Because certainly, our youth are intelligent young people and presented with facts, should be, you know, should be able to make decisions. But it's sort of a scary place, the world is right now, in terms of access to information. And we can look around us, going back to the climate emergency situation. We can say, yeah, we've had these crazy heavy rains, look how much of the beach we've lost. And we can have some of that own physical understanding of some of that, as well as our, you know, things we read. But there are other issues that we're depending totally on, little snippet we see here and there. And so again, that's going to be an educational challenge that we have to all be aware of. And technology is the big piece of it, so we're going to be depending on you, Jason, and, you know, those, and the people who, you know, tune into it to help us out with that. So, but, all in all, just inspired by the youth of the world and the leadership that they have been showing, so. All right, with that, superintendent report.
Try to follow it up. The monthly Wellness Center report, Stick to It Fitness Partnership, is something that we've been working on. I haven't personally, but Teal and Zach have been working with Don Poor. So Don has run Stick to It Fitness downtown for quite some time, and he is now transitioning up to the Wellness Center. So obviously, provides us some more exposure, some new members, and more traffic during the day. Hybrid HIIT class, the boot camp class offered through the Wellness Center, has seen a huge increase in participation. And from what I gather from certain participants, it's quite a comprehensive program.
So what is that?
It's grueling. It's the TXR bands or whatever off the wall, they're not stretchy, they're just, they're there for you to use your own body weight. And of course, you know, Zach's got to go off the deep end and throw weights in there and...
Bear crawls.
Bear, yeah, and, yeah. So it is a pretty grueling, the nicest thing about it is you can modify it to what you can do. You can modify how much resistance you want by the angle of your body. So that is the nice part of it and what gets me through the program.
So Zach?
It is, I mean, it is a workout, it's, he says a half hour, I beg to differ, it's both forty-five minutes, but it is forty-five minutes of intense workout.
And how often?
Twice a week.
Okay. Yeah, well, good for you. And those, the rest of you that groaned when I asked, good for all of you who are doing it. Thank you.
So Zach said he looks forward to offering other sections and creating more specialized exercise classes in the future. He also will be attending three fairs during the month of October. First will be their Senior Resource Fair, held at the Kewaunee County Fairgrounds. Next, Sergeant Babe will have a job fair for adults with disabilities. And then lastly, they're going to the health fair for Bank of Luxembourg employees. Hopefully, be able to get a few more members for the center. And then, just again, working through that transition, making sure that Don has got everything lined up at the Wellness Center, and that goes off with our hitch. I do not have scheduled events for the PAC, I get them today, but I will move on to the update on Manufacturing Day, and it's my error here, I have October sixteenth, it's actually the fifteenth. So in a nutshell, Wilson Fabrication, WS Packaging, and CTI Hospitality will be providing pretty comprehensive tours for Luxembourg, Casco, Kewaunee, and Algoa students. We will be hosting about twelve to fifteen other entities in the auxiliary region that day. We will also be hosting lunch that NWT Plastics is providing. And looks to be a pretty full day for our kids, so they'll be touring those businesses. And then one of the stops, obviously, will be the high school, which will they, which they will then, the NWTC will have a lab outside that they'll get to see, but then they also get to see all of our stuff that's going on. So we have some projects and partnerships, obviously, from people that we work with around the state that will have our stuff up and running to show it off on that day, so that's exciting. And then just for reference, basically Manufacturing Days is every other year, because Ag Career Days, so that's kind of what it's modeled after. Start to the school year has really been awesome. A lot of different staff members, especially in this building, I think all of them to the T have done an excellent job. You know, ninety-nine percent of the kids are having a great start to the school year. Certainly, not everything is flawless, but it really has been a great start. And that's obviously due in large part to great staff and great kids. Community Youth Advocate Grant, so I talked a little bit about this in my memo, but Kewaunee County Department of Human Services, the school district, Algoa Police Department, Kewaunee County Sheriff's Department submitted a proposal for a Youth Justice Innovation Grant. So Teal and I and Dana Johnson from Kewaunee County Human Services worked a lot on that together. So we were awarded a grant of a little over a hundred thousand dollars for the next calendar year, and that will be to implement, basically, a community youth advocate. And that person will be basically charged with building bridges between all the different entities that our kids are bouncing around in between. So that could be the school district, it could be the police department, it could be human services, it could be mental health care, it could be the healthcare system, it could be all this stuff. And what happens is our kids get lost in it, and so do the families, and so do the parents. So this person will, you know, basically be charged with that. Dana from Human Services has been very helpful in kind of reimagining something that works for our community. So we're excited about that, that grant.
Is there a person hired yet for that?
No, we just got awarded the grant probably two weeks ago. So we have, Dana has put a job description together. We have a meeting on the thirtieth to go through all of the different pieces of it. But obviously, a lot of it is modeled after Wolf Den and a lot of the programs that we have successfully implemented in the school district, and we want to be able to grow that. So it was great to be awarded the grant.
He or she will have an office this building, grade school?
That's a great question, and I don't know, because we haven't met yet to begin putting it together. But I think whatever makes sense is what will happen. Because one of the big pieces is when people get lost between all of those is that if you come in and you have your school person hat on, you're just, I'm not talking to you. So we're very cognizant of that, and we want to make sure that this person can be out in the community and working with families that feel like they're disconnected, and build those bridges between agencies, so that we can get some positive movement. So I'll know more on the thirtieth, but obviously, they'll be in our district a lot.
I think it will be a little more non-traditional, just even hours or days. We divided too much, then we kind of get away from the intent of the position. So this is really, someone else's community, it may look very non-traditional. They're working at six-thirty at night, maybe, you know, they're downtown somewhere. I mean, I guess we don't know, we've never done this before, so to next point, I think we'll know more when all of the stakeholders get together and really talk about this time that we received the blessing to go for, so.
Are there other districts that have this type of position that we can, I mean...
No.
Well, actually, what's the community that I can't, San Pablo?
Yeah, but they're not in Wisconsin, in California.
Will this individual be responsible for developing points of contact within all of those systems that you mentioned before? And be a person known to them on a regular basis?
Yeah, I mean, it's, and what they can do in one calendar year is going to be pretty difficult, but I mean, that's the point, is to try and...
Lot of outreach, a lot of face time, a lot of...
But I would say that it's going to be for kids and not to build contact between, you know, agencies. It's more or less, what do I need to know about your agency, what do I need to know about Barb's agency, all these different ones, so that when a kid is in crisis or there is something happening, that it's really quick. It's boom, 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 it's a phone call, it's you coordinate resources and move forward. So, yes, and, but again, I'm not going to speak for the police department, I'm not going to speak for Sheriff's Department, but I know how the school's approaching it. I mean, I think it's evident when you see a kid that gets, they're just lost, right? So whether they have a run-in with something or somebody, and they get something on the record, or they, you know, they dug themselves a hole and they just can't get out of it, and small-town America rears its ugly head sometimes. We want this person to be known as, you know, the person that those kids go to, you know, for the right advice and help and resources. I fully expect it to be in the scope of it, will certainly grow over time, and we're going to learn some things. But we won't learn unless we try, I mean, therefore...
Will we have any presentations from this individual at all?
We could, I mean, I don't have a problem, you know, once we get the person on board and they can give us an update on all the things that they're doing in the community. Again, we'll have to...
Well, we're just one of the stakeholders too.
Talk to, you know, stakeholders that are all involved in it.
Right.
I would assume that they're, if the, you know, Sheriff's Department and Police Department, I mean, they're going to want some type of, you know, communication about what is happening.
So who's, are all the stakeholders going to be involved in the interviewing process?
Again, we...
Yeah, it's real, real new, okay, all right, well, keep us...
Next week, so it's hard, I don't want to say something for somebody, but...
What we have so far is like an ultra, I mean, we have, you know, what we'd have to have a board of directors, like, what are the things that we have to have? So we're kind of talking about all of those pieces, I mean, detail-wise. We have a vision, but...
Okay, it's still super information.
Because we haven't all come together to really discuss that.
And I can send you the proposal that we submitted, and then we'll get an idea of what we're...
That would probably be really helpful, yeah.
Going off of, but, you know, a lot of it is just current initiatives in that we want to make sure that our kids are getting better, you know, in being served. So the goals of the project, I mean, there's seven of them. So reduce the number of occurrences youth are absent from classroom periods, half a full day of school. Right, super easy, can't, it's really hard to teach kids when they're not here. Increase the number of community connections for youth to grow their network of informal and formal sports. Improve family functioning, prevent residency referrals through the Youth Justice System. Prevent child welfare and youth justice referrals. Empower youth and families to fulfill their needs and build a strong trauma and form partnership between all four of those agencies and youth and families. That, the goals of it, I mean, it's a Youth Justice Innovation Grant. So basically, what they're telling you is, the current system doesn't really work that well, so what's your innovative strategy? So this was our proposal, and then I'll send out what was submitted, so you have an idea of what's on it. The next thing is 2020 calendar, and the reason that I want to get this in front of you and basically illustrate kind of the situation we're in. So in Wisconsin, common practice, can't start school until after Labor Day. Well, in 2020, that's September eighth. I don't know about you, but I don't think we have much of an appetite to be going to school in the middle of June. So my question is, I would like to ask DPI to start school early and start on August thirty-first. Basically, gives us a week of school before Labor Day.
Which is a Monday.
Which is a Monday. And our teacher in service would be the following, three weeks, four days of that. And then really, throughout the school year, nothing changes. The only thing that does change a little bit is we would be done the Friday before Memorial Day. So obviously, the teachers would come back after Memorial Day to finalize grades and things. But I personally don't think there's much of an appetite to start school on September eighth and then be done on fifteenth or sixteenth of June. So I would just like to ask DPI to start school early. So the process is that we need school board approval, and then we submit the proposal to DPI. DPI says, no, maybe so. I don't anticipate them having any problems with this, because I would assume most, if not all, school districts are going to ask to start early, because it just pushes everything way too late. So we do not have it as a formal action item, I just wanted to get it in front of you, so you know what I'm talking about. And next month, we'll have it as a formal item for action. And then we will submit to DPI to ask to start on August thirty-first.
Do we have any idea how many students are working in the tourism industry? The reason that I'm asking is that a lot of places see their college kids head out middle of August, but they rely on the high school backup until they get through Labor Day. And if we pull them out, is that going to create an issue for those folks? That's the first question. Second question is that a lot of folks in Wisconsin don't take their own vacation until the latter part of August. You know, we've seen this before when we talked about when to start school. And I think if we've talked that way in the past, we should probably explore that a little bit.
Well, the law is, right now, that we're, it's not to start before September first, isn't that it?
No, Labor, I thought it was Labor Day.
Labor Day, okay, it has nothing to do with the date, okay, yeah.
I was one of those parents that signed that petition to keep it, to start school after Labor Day. Many years ago.
Because, because?
Because vacation-wise.
You took vacation the end of August?
A lot of folks.
Well, the end of August would still be the week before.
I see things differently.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can do all that, I mean, you start September eighth, and then I'll just be prepared for the, you won't have, I'm telling you, you won't have kids in school in June. We already see it.
June fifteenth would just create the opposite problem for the tourism industry and everything else, so it's... Yeah.
We would have this...
I mean, our tarroirs rely on, I just know our tarroirs rely on our youth more specifically. I think our restaurants do too, but, I mean, by May, it's like go time for them, and they want all the help they can get, including some of our employees to help clean condos. So I think we have a different season than most communities, because we rely on our tarroshish, and that's just a certain time of year.
I would think there'd be enough leadway time on this, that parents, if they were going to take vacation, they could plan accordingly, if they knew ahead of time. I would think there'd be enough leadway time on this, that parents, if they were gonna take vacation, they could plan accordingly, if they knew ahead of time. That.
Yeah.
This was gonna happen.
I al, I mean, I also, I'm not to play, I mean, I don't think parents look at it, cause. You, I think you'd be astonished, the number of families that take vacation the week before spring break, or, I mean, the. I don't think people care much about the school calendar anymore, that's just my take on it, and what I see families doing. So, uh, it's to whatever, whatever they wanna do and what fits in their schedule, so.
Well, by the end of August, aren't parents ready for school to start anyway?
I mean.
Let's face it.
So I, I'm just bringing it to you guys, so.
Okay, the other reason I ask is that part of this past year's Dorky Wani Legislative Days. This was actually one of the issues that we, we weighed in on, in keeping the calendar the way that it is. So if we then turn around, pivot, and say, well, except for twenty twenty, when we wanna start before Labor Day.
It's totally up to you guys, I'm just bringing it to you, but.
I, I wonder if we have more kids in, in tourism, if we have more kids in agriculture.
I don't think.
Working on, working on the farms, I don't know, I don't, you know.
I mean.
You want a firsthand opinion of this?
Yeah.
I think, uh, school after the first day of June. You don't get near as much out of a, a school day in June as you do in September.
I think you're on to something, Dave.
I, I say start, start, uh, early and get out early. Agriculture, there's so few kids on the farm today, on the small family farms anymore, and I used to be the biggest advocate for that, that you'd ever. Ever would have, but in the last twenty-five years, that has changed so bad, so much that it's just not an issue, I don't think.
Yeah, and I sort of would have to agree with you, that by June, to expect that we're gonna have any real. Quality attention by the students for the first two weeks of June, um, no. Well.
Uh, the, the other thing you could do is, is take a quick survey, how many of our students are involved in tourist-type jobs? Is that, that would work over Labor Day, uh, you know, up in Door County, or even in Kiwanis County, it's gonna be quite a. A tourist deal too, but, uh, they still got the, the long weekend that they could work on.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too, they would still be able to work the actual weekend, the long weekend.
Would it sound better and feel better if we started the first of September instead of the thirty-first of August? I mean, that's just, you know, it's, it's just that, that, that month issue, that August issue.
Starting on a Tuesday, but.
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, because I think, you know, Labor Day is always in September, so sometimes it's on the first of September. Always on the second, I don't know, that might be just one way to kind of deal with that, uh, earlier start than expect, I'm not sure. That way you start with two four-day weeks for kids, and so. I know, all sorts of options.
Yeah. Well, I guess, um, it will be dead in the water if DPI doesn't. Um, do you have any idea what some of the other districts are thinking about this, or maybe they're not even, uh, looking at it yet?
Well, I mean, I think there are school districts that start early for a variety of reasons, so last year. Um, there's a bunch of school districts that started early because they had referendums, and they need to get stuff done, you know, or they. Um, you know, wanted to be out of school so that they could do it here, that, you know, so it's, everybody has a different reason. Um, sure, I mean, I get the whole tourist thing, you, you know.
But there's tourist things I'm either in, I mean, you know, I'm both.
Either, you either get, you either get them for Labor Day, or you get them for Memorial Day, but you're not gonna get them from both, for the both, so.
Decide which is better.
It's gonna be, yeah, it's just super hard, and just the way it falls, I guess, is the hard part.
I guess, the September first suggestion would allow a three-day weekend on each end of it. In terms of the lingering tourists and things like that, um, cause I know Monday can still be a pretty popular day. You know, people take long weekends, um.
I like that.
The September first option, that would, would that, how would that change, is it just at the end a little bit, or?
I mean, it wouldn't necessarily change the end, I mean, unless you wanted to pad minutes, I mean, we have. Minutes met, so if you started on the first, you would just, you wouldn't have as much of a buffer as you. You, you normally do, sorry, so you need eleven thirty-seven, and we're usually around eleven fifty. So if you miss a day, so you have six and a half hours, so you can do it without moving. The end, end date, but. Unless you wanna come back to school after Memorial Day and, you know, go to the fourth of June.
I think start on August thirty first, I think Memorial Day is much more important than Labor Day, as far as the tourism and the work environment. So, that's what I see, from what I see in where, in where I work.
Yeah, I guess I'm inclined to do the earlier versus later, but September one might just sound better. It just doesn't sound so early, August sounds early, but. Um, from a practical standpoint.
When we add.
We already have three football games in by that time.
Yep, now, we always do, don't we?
Like, people are worried about this stuff, and you look at sports, right, you're starting the first week of August. I mean, you're playing two, three, sometimes four games before school even starts.
Right.
So I don't know, I mean, they don't take any of that into consideration.
Right, and that probably involves more youth than.
Well, certainly here, it involves a lot of youth, I mean, because it's not just, you know, not just football, it's a lot of stuff. You have soccer, you have volleyball, you have cross-country, you have all of that stuff. So you have, I mean, basically, you've got a month to chew on it, and you can find out information. I just wanted to get it in front of you so that you understand what I'm.
Yeah.
Looking ahead and trying to work off of.
Yeah, realizing that the Labor Day is so late was not something I had.
That's the latest Labor Day can possibly be, so.
Yeah, right, so, okay.
The last, I, I don't have it on here, I just wanted to say that, um, if you remember last year, our bike build-off, the motorcycle. Um, was raffled off on Saturday, and John Grosspyer, who was from Forestville, won it. He was actually here today, he called the school to see if he could meet all the kids that built it, so. He had it in the parking lot, and all the kids got to go out and meet him, and I think he's pretty ecstatic for his. Twenty or forty dollar investment, he's got a pretty nice-looking Harley, so. It was pretty cool, I'm glad that somebody in that area wanted it, so.
Yeah, and that was interested in meeting the kids and sort of, yeah, keep the excitement going, that's great.
It was a nice addition to the card show this year.
Questions or comments? Okay, we'll keep moving, maybe.
Alright, we are off to a good start at the elementary school. Um, just wanted to highlight a couple of things from the first couple of weeks of school. Um, we, if you remember me talking last year a little bit about some of the new things, some of the teachers are trying, um, we have the fifth and sixth grade. Schedule, they're departmentalizing, um, and that's been really positive, I've been asking as many students as I possibly can. Um, their thoughts on it, and they really like it, um, I think it, you know, from a relationship standpoint, it really. Um, I've heard nothing but good things about it, um, some of the kids said that they're tired, but. But they're just fine, so they'll figure it out, um, we have Mr. Bredel in his combination class, so his third and fourth grade class. Um, and that's also been going really, really well, it's been a really, really positive thing for the students of his from last year. That he is continuing to have again this year, um, those students are off to a really great start, and, um. You know, are kind of acting as role models a little bit for the others in the class too, kind of taking on that leadership piece, um. We, this year, um, Nurse Carrie and Linda Lebat are collaborating a little bit. To go into the classrooms more and educate around different health and wellness topics, um, so they started that right away. Um, they've been super flexible with times, um, they have been covering all different kinds of topics. From, um, hygiene to hand washing, um, they did an experiment with bread. And they, um, are trying to grow mold, or based off of the bacteria that may or may not be on their hands, um. So, just trying to find new ways to connect to the students, um, and kind of bring that health and wellness focus. Um, into the classroom, as well as part of FIED and things like that, so that's been huge. Um, we have a couple of teachers from the elementary school and another from the high school. Attending a restorative practices workshop coming up, um, next week, Monday and Tuesday, um, that's in Milwaukee. Um, and that'll, um, I think be a really positive thing, um, to kind of start wrapping their minds around. And kind of fitting themselves into that, and what would that mean for our students, for our district? How could we use that as a framework to communicate and to get along with each other, problem solve. Um, resolve conflicts, kind of all of that, um, all of that kind of stuff. Um, and then we also, um, kicked off our primary grade, um, uh. Basically, our phonics program, if you remember me talking about that a little bit, um, we have done, we did a lot of work on that over the summer. Um, and now we're, we're living it with the students, so that's been definitely a huge thing too, so all good things. Um, coming up next, I think it's next week, Friday, October fourth, we have the PTS sponsored special persons dance. So this is something new that they're trying, um, one of the things that I had shared in the past is that they're just kind of trying to. Think of fun things to build community, so this is definitely one of those things, um, it's not a moneymaker, it's not anything but just a. Beginning of the year kickoff, um, something fun for the students, so it's October fourth in the cafeteria. At the elementary school from four thirty to six thirty, um, students can come with a special person or special people. Or, um, an older brother or sister, or, and, you know, it's pretty open, uh, but just something, something fun for the kids to start off this year.
Coming weekend, right, so that's perfect.
Yes, and they kind of had thought that through too, and, um, they kind of wanted to try it on this specific Friday. Um, they felt like there was a lot of activities for a lot of the older kids, um, and then after the parade on Friday. They said there's kind of a lull, you know, for the younger kids and what is available for them to do and participate in, so. Um, it'll be El Goma spirit wear dress theme, so nothing too fancy, but just something for fun. And then I put another reminder on here just about picture day, because it is so late in the school year this year, October eighth, um, which is a Tuesday. And then retakes on Tuesday, November twelfth, so that's all for me.
Questions or comments? Speaking of the pictures, so the picture day was here, and all the students have their new name tags and the staff. Know that, so, um, we're moving in the right direction. Okay, business manager's finance bulletin report.
Oh, mine is, uh, pre-simpole, um, so this month is basically when I think of all the KPIs. Reports are, uh, in and submitted, so the big thing that we need to concentrate on is, um, yeah, October fifteenth. Uh, numbers, that's, so that's when we get our real numbers, uh, from the state, uh, so that's what we concentrate on, so we need to set up, uh, two meetings. Um, one is, one is the finance committee, um, and then the budget hearing. Generally, uh, finance committee obviously has to be October fifteenth or later, um, but we have to have our stuff published. Uh, for, out there for the budget hearing, uh, which everyone takes place before the normal board meeting. So, I'm proposing the finance committee, uh, meet October fifteenth, uh, just, um, just because that's what it was last year. Gonna make a difference.
What day is that, Jason?
It's a Wednesday.
Monday.
Oh, a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah, the fifteenth is a Tuesday.
At one o'clock?
Yes.
That's the manufacturing day.
That's manufacturing days.
What is?
That's the manufacturing days here, which, I mean, you can certainly have it, I just don't know how available I'm going to be.
Let's see, finance committee is you, myself, and Dave, so we might even have it off-site, so.
Yeah.
Um, would the sixteenth work for you? Dave, would the sixteenth, which is a Wednesday of October, work for you?
I believe so.
Is one o'clock good, Dave?
Or would you like?
Uh, yes.
I mean, we could do it at eleven in the morning too, if, if you prefer an earlier time.
Uh, one, one's okay, I guess.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so October sixteenth for the finance committee, and then the budget hearing. You're proposing the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, which is, uh, before the next, uh, the twentieth is the school meeting.
Right, so we just, um, have it like at.
Or earlier.
Um, five thirty.
That's what we did last year.
Five thirty, according to six, what do we think we're gonna need?
What date do you want that on?
That's Monday, October twenty-eighth, the same date as our board meeting, just before. You think we need the hour?
We never use the order.
We never, yeah, we never use it.
So we make it six o'clock?
I think that's fine.
Yeah, otherwise we have that lapse.
Yep.
Okay, how about six o'clock?
Six o'clock?
I know that's probably presses you a little bit, you were just saying that that's your busy day, John, right?
Um, actually, five thirty or six o'clock, it's sandwiches nicely, I just wanna make sure you have enough time for the. Public, um, presentation for the budget, followed by the, by the school board, so it doesn't matter.
So five thirty.
Five forty-five.
I mean, both, both of them have to be open meetings anyways, so, I mean.
Yeah.
And if you, if you feel you have enough time with a half hour to get through the whole budget, depending upon how many people may show up.
Right.
And that's, that's the thing, we usually don't have very many people show up, but.
Five thirty or six.
Then let's just give us an extra fifteen minutes and say five forty-five and be done.
Alright, interesting time, but.
But.
Alright, five forty-five on October twenty-eighth. Alright, was there anything else? Okay, any questions? Alright, we'll keep moving. Special Ed report, Pathfinder update, Katie.
Alright, I'm gonna start with Pathfinder, um, also a really great start, I mean, Lexi's been really great job with kids. She's learning quickly that really well laid-out plans don't always go as planned. She had a lot of PowerPoints and videos and everything set for the first day, by the end of the day, she had scrapped it, cause it was like. This is not how things are running here, so, um, explaining it quick, but she's doing a really nice job, the kids all seem to really like her, which. Um, is a little bit wordy, but that's huge, she's very much about community, um, she's got a lot of different speakers coming in. Um, to talk to the kids about various things, she's got three field trips set up for the next two weeks. We have a lot of ranch cheese, um, so the kids can see how cheese is made, and they'll do Heritage Hill, and then. One student is really interested in going into some sort of career with animals, so we get, uh, the behind-the-scenes tour, a book coming. Um, and the book club is still running with the librarian, um, they seem to be really enjoying that still, so it's really a good partnership to have. Um, special ed, um, the high school special ed teachers are both new, they've been doing very well, and very pleased. Um, if you walk around, you don't see them in their classroom very often, so that's a really nice change, the kids are in classes with their peers. Um, so it's been a kind of a breath of fresh air adding two new people up here, um, there's a transition fair. For fourteen to twenty-one-year-olds with disabilities at the Fairgrounds in Kiwanis, um, October, or in, that's, sorry. Uh, October twenty-second, from four to six, so, um, usually it's. So usually it's all kids from Wexford that goes, since it's right in Wexford, but I'll try to get some more kids from our area to get to go to that. Ride for Kids is starting again, last year they ran the program, was it in spring, right? Yeah, so it's just a program every Wednesday for kids with disabilities. They get partnered with a high school volunteer, it runs for one hour at night. Usually have a large abundance of volunteers, so each kid gets a one-on-one person and they set up the auxiliary justice with a bunch of different adapted activities. And the whole point is just to get kids with disabilities that generally couldn't be involved in sports just being more active. And last year was a really big success, both for the kids with and without disabilities, so. Yeah, Kewahnee, Wexford, and running for the first time this year too, so Adams, but doing a really great job together. And then...
Since Maria's here, we have her give a yoga update.
This is kind of inclusive, special ed and non-special ed, but I've been doing mindful mornings during the what matters times, like that fifth and sixth grade morning time, and it really opened it up to anyone in elementary school. It's primarily just fifth and sixth that come, but I've had a really good turnout this year and I've been kind of surprised. Last year I had maybe like five or six kids that would show up here and there, but so far at the beginning of the school year we've had between like ten and twenty kids. And last year I took a training where I am kind of, I'm not a certified yoga instructor, but I am certified to teach kids and they donated twenty-some yoga mats, so I have mats for them, I have lesson plans from the training that I took and they seem to really enjoy it. It's actually my favorite part of the day, just starting off, just like, oh.
Yeah.
Doesn't always stay that way, but...
Good start for them too, excellent. Any further questions or comments? Okay, we'll keep moving. Teal, Levelboma monthly update.
So Levelboma Health Community team is still cracking with their QPR, trying to question, persuade, and response. I know that they have a very detailed list this year of who are the two they are reaching to and I was really excited to see some of the involvement being our youth. So I know specifically this month they'll be training our Wolf program leaders and the students that are in our beta class, but they plan to do that once a month, they're doing a certain training with their youth, but that also with clarity as well, so that's exciting. Tanya, our onsite therapist from Bellin Health, is thinking a little differently outside her traditional role. So she has jumped through the hoops of her own system in order to provide a new opportunity for our youth where during lunch, youth that are not necessarily clients or patients of hers can come to our dream lounge and express their mental health and emotional well-being through art and she's working in coordination with their art teacher. So we'll meet about that tomorrow, I don't have a whole lot of specific details, but really excited about that. We have a lot of students that will not have access to Tanya based on some barriers that we're still trying to figure out through systems, but this might help some of those students that need that support without having that traditional access, so. With that said, something that we're working together, Nick and Katie Horn and myself met with a group called Rise Together. I was connected with them a couple of times and they just keep popping up, so of course I'm like, oh, there's gotta be something here. And so, you know, with them, they are a group that have had lived experience with drug and alcohol abuse and they specifically go to schools in the state of Wisconsin and they focus not on, like, don't do drugs type of thing or the, you know, I guess the consequences of doing drugs. They talk about mental health, emotional well-being, they talk about healing through storytelling, and they also really stress the importance of developing a recovery community and bringing awareness to that, that recovery is, is, there's hope in that and that there are communities and that our kids can be connected to that in any way, shape, or form. Even recovery as, you know, somebody who is not directly involved with drugs or alcohol, but someone who's a bystander of it and how they can become part of that recovery world if they've been in a family who's had it either, so. We've had an initial meeting, there's gonna be more in the future. They want to focus instead of all of these schools, they want to come to five schools in the state of Wisconsin and really have partnerships through the school year, no pet I look at. So we're part of those initial conversations. And we, we both have the same funders of some of our initiatives, so that might align very well. And of course their language and the way they come together for problems is very similar to how we do that in Elboma. Some more to come on that. I handed out a little article. The reason I'm handing this out is not because my beautiful face is on there, but more because it kind of, it, I, I hope that, again, kudos to what our school district is doing and what we believe in, but we are one of four schools in the country they are focusing on. You can read about Illinois and the nomination of Wisconsin, you can read about a, a school community in Texas and how we are all coming about education in our communities, especially education directly aligned to social determinants of health. So a social determinant of health is anything that really impacts our health and well-being. So we know that healthcare is only ten percent, a certain percent of our healthcare or our health and well-being, but education is also a contributing factor of that, where we live is a contributing factor of that, all of those things. So they have spotlighted us in this article that has been out. But then from that, I was invited to speak on Capitol Hill on October third in Madison. Mr. Kocher had the privilege to do it, but I will be in front of a hundred legislators and I, we have selected our school to talk about how education matters in the state of Wisconsin in talking about the health and well-being of our students and not necessarily focusing on academics solely, but that there's, it's more complex than that. And then, of course, that's a domino effect, because we have, we have about fifty people coming in May from the Madison area that will be touring our school. So really good things happening and something really to be proud of, that we have a lot of people, both in the education system but in other systems, that are really trying to figure out how they can do this as well and not necessarily to copy, I think they are trying, but I also think it's ultimately changing policy in the way that we think about things, and so that to me is very exciting. I get to spend an hour with Joel Kittens too, he's been very lucky to have me. I cannot lobby, of course, but I will be talking about the bright spots that we have here and I know he knows a lot of work, but I'll be excited to be a little bit more intimate with him. Have that conversation and invite him here to see it. Again, I think that's it, I don't know. Oh, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, for the last five years they've been doing research or trying to figure out, they've been funding a researcher and trying to figure out a way to code all of these communities who have won Culture of Health Award. And of the forty-plus communities now, they have identified Elboma as number three in something that's called distributed power. So they are, through their quoting system, have identified that we are doing a very stellar, very good job, very stellar job of being able to share power from formal to informal leaders and what that looks like. And you can see that with our youth leading change initiatives or just the way that we don't have all of those solutions and try to bring together our youth to think differently or our community members. So more to come on that, but they're gonna be interviewing about ten people from our community, both internally in our school and then externally, and then we'll do a big publication about that. So, good stuff.
Yeah, always. Questions? All right. All right, let's keep moving. I don't think we had any committees made, did we?
Nope.
Specific items for discussion? Testing items? All right, then we'll move on to action items. Can I have a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of August twenty-six, twenty nineteen?
I shall move.
Second.
Motion made by Joanne, second by John. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented to us as well as...
I shall, I shall move, man in person.
Okay. I think maybe, speaking of that, Dave, I think when it comes to financial things like our bills, I will do a roll call vote. That way we can specifically hear your vote as well, all right?
Okay.
So this next one is on the presentation and approval of bills, so I need a motion for that?
You made the motion.
Okay, so you made the motion, Dave, and do I hear a second?
I'll second.
So made by Dave, second by Ann, questions or discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, John?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the annual academic and career planning plan.
So move.
Motion made by Pat.
I'll second.
Second, second by Joanne. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the six-hundred-dollar donation from Dentistry by Design for five K classrooms.
So move.
I'll second.
Made by Pat, second by Ann. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the hundred-dollar past-due lunch account donation and school supply donation from Steel Chiropractic.
So move.
Made by Mick.
I'll second.
Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Veterans Day Band Concert to be held on Wednesday, November thirteenth, twenty nineteen.
I'll move. I'll second.
Motion made by Ann, second by Mick. Questions or discussion on that?
Is, is this high school or is this community band?
It's the high school.
I would say it's combined.
Yeah, I think it's, they do both.
They do it together.
Okay, so we're not gonna have any issue with, with the local churches, are we? If this is during the day, because it's evening performance.
It's in the, it's on a Wednesday, I believe.
Is it Wednesday afternoon or Wednesday evening?
Wednesday evening.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
When it was presented to me, Jen said that she had been in contact with the churches.
Oh, okay, then fine, good.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any requests for future agenda items? Hearing none? I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, some sections, one C, E, F, and I for the purpose of personnel matters, hires, and staffing.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Joanne. Roll call vote? John?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.